Good evening and welcome to Spokane City Council. And we will start with our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are on the unceded land of the Spokane people and that these lands were once the major trading center for the Spokanes as they shared this place and welcomed other area tribes through their relations, history, trade, and ceremony. We also want to acknowledge that the land holds the spirit of the place through its knowledge, culture, and all the original people since time immemorial. As we take a moment to consider the impacts of colonization, may we also acknowledge the strengths and resiliency of the Spokanes and their relatives. As we work together in making decisions that benefit all, may we do so as one heart, one mind, and one spirit. We are grateful to be on the shared lands of the Spokane people and ask for the support of their ancestors and all relations. We ask that you recognize these injustices that forever changed the lives of the Spokane people and all their relatives. We agree to work together to stop all acts of continued injustices toward Native Americans and all our relatives. It is time for reconciliation. We must act upon the truths and take actions that will create restorative justice for all. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Fister, will you call the roll?
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Sapon.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Klitsky.
Present.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Here.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Bingle is absent.
Thank you. I believe, Mr. Jacoby, we have some public comment on the consent agenda. The first one being John Alder. Does he enter online?
John, if you're online, can you hit star three? We'll come back to you, John. If you're online, you can hit star three.
Next, we will have Will Hughlings, and after Will, we'll have Cherry Hill.
Good evening. My name is Will Hughlings, and I live downtown. Basically, I'm gonna, I wanna express my strong opposition to OPR 2024-0673. I just, I'm having a hard time figuring out why you guys need to spend up to $100,000 on four undercover police vehicles. Now, I'm all for the law enforcement, but we do have the RCW 69.50.505, which is a Washington state law that governs the seizure and forfeiture of property related to drug-related crimes. So, under this law, the Spokane Police Department has authority to seize vehicles, cash, and other assets used in or acquired through drug-related offenses. These seized vehicles can be forfeited and then used for official purposes, including undercover work. This approach would offer several significant benefits. So, one, asset seizure. You guys got my email. Two, cost savings. Three, a variety of vehicles that they can acquire. And then, four, direct application to law enforcement. The law allows forfeited property to be used immediately by law enforcement, enhancing the department's ability to combat drug-related crimes and other criminal activities without delay. And this is actually from the RCW. So, I know it's kind of a touchy subject, because there's been a couple of different court cases when it comes to this RCW. But I think it would be a lot better to utilize this RCW than going out and spending money recklessly, it seems, because you guys are always in need of vehicles for some reason. But thank you.
Thank you, Will. Cherry Hill, and then pass. Okay. Dennis Flynn?
Council President, thank you. Dennis Flynn, I live near St. Charles. Regarding OPR 2021-072, defending against a lawsuit for mistreating our firefighters. It's 2024, and this starts with 2021. Well, here we are a year later and adding another $80,000 to fund a lawsuit to defend the terrible choices of our highly-paid SRHD that continues to be a dark stain on our city and is a waste of our precious resources continuously. Last year, this body commended the SRHD director for the complete sham of doing none of his own investigation, sacrificing us citizens and these first responders to the narratives of lockdown, shuttering small businesses, closing churches, enforcing known anti-science measures against us, such as social distancing, when you all up there are breathing the same air mix that I am down here, wearing masks whose weaves are larger than the airborne viruses, and mandating vaccines now proven unsafe for young, healthy people and easily seen as unnecessary early on in the pandemic. The first responders who are part of this lawsuit either already had natural immunity or had almost 0% risk in the first place. And let's not forget, these unnecessary infringements retarded our children's education, eliminated livelihoods, increased mental distress, suicides and drug abuse, and set us up for many undeserved struggles into our futures. Responding to my first contact in August 2020, the Health District only parroted DOH guidelines about shutting down schools based on a single, obviously flawed and biased model of King County. Dr. Lutz was a coward when we needed much more, just like Dr. Korn Getz at the DOH, who still pushes these experimental vaccines on children. These are the people we're just supposed to believe? Infinitesimal risk to our children, minuscule risk to healthy adults, and after it all, we still have excess mortality, increased disability, and now we know increasing chronic diseases. These leaders have proven themselves less capable than the public is to make our own decisions in our own best interest, if we're informed, instead of lied to. And over recent weeks, we hear similar claptrap, as we heard from our betters during COVID, such as handing out new holidays to city employees like they're candy, not trusting law-abiding citizens to carry firearms, virtue signaling about immigration and international affairs, embracing the easy road of raising our taxes instead of making hard budget choices. Just think, the hundreds of thousands of dollars allocated to this lawsuit would have been avoided had we just provided reasonable accommodations to place these first responders, who were hailed as heroes in 2020, across the multitudinous shifts in firehouses where they were and still are needed. I hope Fire Chief Oberg has taken my advice when she was appointed and has apologized to the firefighters for the incompetence which the SRHD subjected them to and all of us. Regarding 2024-0679, the property tax exemptions for housing, I hope we all benefit from the exemption of property taxes for the owners of these properties and that we don't have, they don't have inequitable benefit from not paying taxes in the first place and then getting guaranteed subsidized rent in the second place, right? And OPR 2024-0674, the Department of Ecology grant. What a waste. This has federal funding as its source, so the highly-paid people at the IRS take our tax dollars, absconds with their first cuts, of course, then grants it out to the highly-paid people at the states who take their cut, and then doles it out to the highly-paid people at the Department of Ecology, who take their cut as well.
Thank you, Dennis.
And then grant it back to us with dictat, as what it's used for.
Good to see you, sir. Andrew Northrop?
First of all, thank you, councilmembers, for your thankless work. I think I said that last time I was here, that you guys are right in the middle, both sides of our entire economy, our entire region, our entire city relies on you guys working together to hear our voices, and I genuinely appreciate the work that you guys do. I'd like to thank you on the OPR 2024-0679, the tax exemption for multifamily developers. And that word right there, developers, has been really ruminating in my mind lately, the last few weeks. I think developers are educators, developers are elected city officials, developers are contractors and builders, but they're people, at the end of the day, generally dirt workers, iron workers, concrete workers, union workers. Developers built this city, and we can't forget about that. And I don't want them to have a connotation or a bad word associated with that, if that's greed or if that's financial gain. They're really small family business owners, like myself, usually employing one or two, three people at most. They're not all big conglomerate, multifamily, you know, big, huge developers. There's a lot in the mix there, but, you know, they are visionary people that help build the community, and I wanna compliment and acknowledge on public record that I, in my own profession, had misjudged a guy, Jim Frank, who I actually hold in really high regard right now. You guys might not always like what Jim says or does, but when Jim looked at how he was building neighborhoods and inner areas, he took on his own dime to have plans redone so that they would incorporate sidewalks and front porches, and they would engage the community members. And that's honestly something I really didn't understand about Jim, and it wasn't until a mentor of mine, Charlotte Jones, got me involved in the Spokane Home Builders Association, and I got to challenge my own opinion about a guy like Jim Frank. And I'm saying that as he's one of my largest customers and was then. So, I was wrong then, and we can be wrong and still be right and move forward. So, thank you, guys. Appreciate you.
Thank you. That's the end of public testimony for the consent agenda. Any council commentary? Councilmember Klitsky?
I just want to acknowledge what Mr. Hughling said, because when I was seeking office, the first meeting I had with the police, I asked that exact same question, because I had met up with one of the officers I was meeting with at a West Central Community Center event, and they had this, like, outreach car that was like a Mustang that they had seized. And she explained to me that it's actually really rare that they can repurpose a seized car for police purposes, because it's just kind of a complex retrofitting. But I had those exact same thoughts, and I totally understand where you're coming from.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, and just to piggyback on that, you know, I think civil asset forfeiture is something that benefits the city, but it's something we have to be very careful about, because oftentimes, assets get seized, and there's no necessarily a guilty verdict. And so, I just think we have to be very respectful and consider, you know, that aspect of it. But that being said, you know, civil asset forfeiture exists. It's here. And we do need to take, you know, full advantage. And so, we do set a budget for them to maintain a certain level of funding in that account, and they do have an allocation often that they can use to purchase cars out of that as well. So, it's not necessarily that you can use the cars that you've seized. I think, as Councilmember Klitsky said, but, you know, we can fund them from some of the assets that they do end up seizing.
Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, really appreciate the comments on item number seven at 915 East Martin Luther King Way. I think that, you know, this is the kind of development that we wanna see when we talk about building up, not out. You know, that property, kind of adjacent to MLK Way, right by the Ben Berre Trail, I think is really gonna be a boon for, you know, the growing U District, a great connector, and a really, really exciting development to see that come into that vacant land down there on MLK Way.
Any other council commentary? Thank everyone for their comments. Prepare to vote. Did I get you?
There we go.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Fister?
Special Budget ordinances. Ordnance amending ordinance number C 364627, passed by the City Council November 27, 2023, entitled, "In ordinance adopting the annual budget of the city of Spokane for 2024, making appropriations to the various funds of the city of Spokane government for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2024, and providing it shall take effect immediately upon passage and declaring an emergency in appropriating funds in." Ordinance C 36561, Fire Grants Miscellaneous Fund. Number one, increase revenue by $140,000. A of the increased revenue, $140,000, is provided by the Washington Department of Ecology through the Spill Prevention Preparedness and Response Equipment Grant Program. Number two, increase appropriation by $140,000. A of the increased appropriation, $110,000, is to provide it solely for equipment. B of the increased appropriation, $30,000, is to be provided solely for registration and schooling. This action arises from the need to accept grant funding from Department of Ecology for hazmat response equipment and training.
Thank you. One public comment. Dennis Flynn?
This is 36564.
One.
One.
Oh, so that's if I didn't get to it in my opening. So, the last sentence I had to say, how much of our tax dollars do you think it took for us to get this $140,000 back after it went through all the Fed, state, and Department of Ecology to hear? Is the over or under $200,000 the right mark? Thanks.
Thank you. Any council commentary? Prepare to vote. Thank you.
Ordinance C 36562, Miscellaneous Community Development Grants Fund. Number one, increase revenue by $1 million. A of the increased revenue, $1 million, is provided solely for grant revenue from the Washington State Healthcare Authority, HCA. Number two, increase appropriation by $1 million. A of the increased appropriation, $900,000, is provided solely for contractual services. B of the increased appropriation, $100,000, is provided solely for the city's administrative costs, including salaries, benefits, supplies, and equipment. This action arises from the award and acceptance of the Washington State HCA Street Medicine Grant Funds.
Any council commentary? Prepare to vote. Thank you.
Ordinance C 36563, Human Services Grants Fund. Number one, increase revenue by $1,671,523. A of the increased revenue, $1,671,523, is provided solely for grant revenue from the Washington State Department of Commerce, DOC, as part of the Right of Way Row Initiative. Number two, increase appropriation by $1,671,523. A of the increased appropriation, $1,509,871, is provided solely for contractual services. B of the increased appropriation, $161,652, is provided solely for the city's administrative costs, including salaries, benefits, supplies, and equipment. And Miscellaneous Community Development Grants Fund. Number one, increase revenue by $200,000. A of the increased revenue, $200,000, is provided solely for grant revenue by the Washington State Department of Commerce as part of the Right of Way Initiative. Number two, increase appropriation by $200,000. A of the increased appropriation, $200,000, is provided solely for the city's administrative costs, including salaries, benefits, supplies, services, and equipment. This action arises from the contract amendment that awards additional grant funding for the DOC Row Initiative.
No public comment. Any council commentary? Prepare to vote. Thank you.
Ordinance C 36564, American Rescue Fund. Number one, reallocate part of the appropriation by $68,200 that was previously allocated for the purpose of support for multicultural centers. Number two of the reallocated appropriation, $68,200, is provided solely for the purpose of WUI evacuation modeling. This action arises from the need to obtain WUI evacuation modeling data.
One public comment. Dennis Flynn?
Hey, counsel. Wildfire evacuation modeling. So, the first sentence of the summary, as well as in the body of the briefing paper, includes this quote. Quote, "The extension of Spokane's wildfire season brought on by climate change." End quote. Show me your evidence that it's a factual statement to say Spokane's wildfire season is extended by climate change. If you can't, then please quit including this kind of rhetorical garbage in our legislation. Additionally, the ordinance identifies you're declaring an emergency, because changes could not have been anticipated in need for the need to model evacuations. Calling poor planning an emergency is ridiculous.
Thank you. Any council commentary? Councilmember Klitsky?
I've been asking for this since my first day on council. I have neighborhoods in my jurisdiction and in other jurisdictions that are deeply concerned about wildfire and how they are going to be evacuating. And we just upzoned our entire city. So, we're going to see more intense development throughout the entire city. So, we really need a plan for how many people we can absorb in the WUI and how they are going to get out, and what infrastructure we need to make everything safe. So, I'm really grateful for this.
Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, I'll definitely echo that. This has obviously been a big concern with respect to Latah that we've discussed quite a bit. And it really is the right step towards emergency preparedness. And I think, at the end of the day, will end up saving us in the long run.
Any council commentary? Prepare to vote. Thank you.
Ordinance C 36565, Miscellaneous Grants Fund. Number one, increase revenue by $712,800. A of the increased revenue, $282,500, is provided by the Administrative Office of the Courts for the Community Court and the Municipal Court Department. B of the increased revenue, $251,550, is provided by the Administrative Office of the Courts for the Domestic Violence Intervention Treatment Court and the Municipal Court Department. C of the increased revenue, $86,000, is provided by the Administrative Office of the Courts for the Drug Court and the Municipal Court Department. D of the increased revenue, $76,350, is provided by the Administrative Office of the Courts for the DUI Court and the Municipal Court Department. E of the increased revenue, $16,400, is provided by the Administrative Office of the Courts for the Veterans Treatment Court and the Municipal Court Department. Number two, increase appropriation by $712,800. A of the increased appropriation, $621,950, is provided solely for base wages and benefits. B of the increased appropriation, $5,400, is provided solely for minor equipment. C of the increased appropriation, $47,950, is provided solely for travel. D of the increased appropriation, $37,500, is provided solely for professional services. This action arises from the need to accept the Administrative Office of the Courts therapeutic court grants.
There is no public comment. Any council commentary? Prepare to vote. Thank you.
Ordinance C 36566, General Fund. Number one, remove one classified community justice counselor from 21 to 20 from the Community Justice Services Department. Two, remove two classified community justice specialists from 7 to 5 from the Community Justice Services Department. Number three, decrease appropriation by $66,700. A of the decreased appropriation, $43,600, is removed from base wages. B of the decreased appropriation, $23,100, is removed from employee benefits. Four, add one classified community justice counselor from 0 to 1 in the Municipal Court Department. Five, add three classified community justice specialists from 0 to 3 in the Municipal Court Department. Six, add one classified accounting clerk from 0 to 1 in the Municipal Court Department. Seven, increase appropriation by $103,700. A of the increased appropriation, $67,100, is provided solely for base wages. B of the increased appropriation, $36,600, is provided solely for employee benefits. This action arises from staffing changes within the court system.
There is no public comment. Any council commentary? I'll just say the courts came to us, and they are rightsizing within their budget, and so happy to support the changes they recommended. Prepare to vote. Thank you.
Resolution 2024-78, declaring Gordon Truck Center doing business as Freightliner Northwest Spokane as sole source provider and authorizing the city to enter into a five-year value blanket order for the purchase of Detroit diesel engine parts components on an as-needed basis approximately $100,000 annually without public bidding.
No public comment. Any council commentary? Prepare to vote. Thank you. Do I miss one? Okay, let's try again. Prepare to vote. Got it? Thank you.
Resolution 2024-79, declaring Community Health Association of Spokane, CHAS, the sole source provider for provision of street medicine programs in Spokane to be funded with a grant from the Washington Healthcare Authority.
Did we skip Gordon Truck?
We just did it.
Okay, okay. All right. No public comment on this. Any public comment, counsel?
Yeah, just to be brief, I, there are times when a sole source makes a lot of sense. I'm not convinced that this is one of those times. I think we should be trying to find the most effective and best bang for our buck, and I'm just not entirely sure that we're gonna be able to do that with a sole source contract. So, I will not be supporting this.
Any council commentary? I'll just say, we know CHAS has been doing this work. They've been doing it excellent. They stepped up when there wasn't a request for their services and have been filling that gap. So, happy to support. Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, I'm excited to see this kind of get expanded, so this will help with the hours for our street medicine program, looking at Saturdays and later into the evenings. It really is important, I think, to meet people where they're at, with their health needs, and really does go a long way in terms of health equity and stabilization, so people can get back on their footing.
Any other commentary? Prepare to vote. All right. I've cleared it. Prepare to vote. Thank you.
Resolution 2024-80, in support of the city of Spokane's 2024 Fair Housing Plan and affirmatively furthering fair housing.
We have several public comments. Cherry Hill? Pass. John Alder on the phone or online?
John, if you're online, you can hit star three, and we'll come back to you.
And Dennis Flynn?
Hi, Dennis Flynn. I live near St. Charles. For everyone, please note the, quote, "affirmatively furthering fair housing," end quote, requirements of the Fair Housing Act, and must undertake, quote, "fair housing planning," end quote, in order to get the millions of dollars from HUD, which are the dick, which come with the dictat strings that require us to not provide local solutions to local problems, but instead, subject us to never-ending increases in taxes that result in no solutions and rather perpetuating the problem, because the money goes away if you actually solve the problem. Just look at yourself at all the whereas statements in this ordinance, and you'll see that your tax dollars are going to the feds, who take their cut first, and then give it to the agencies, who, of course, take their cut, who then give it back to us with dictat strings, treating us like puppets. And to demonstrate just how little they care what you think, the presentation of the agenda identifies two surveys were completed by posting on the Northwest Fair Housing Association's website, Twitter. website, Twitter, and Facebook page, as well as emails sent to Northwest Fair Housing Association's email list. No bias could possibly happen from the people who got those surveys, right? Additionally, surveys were sent to the city email list. Out of all of that, guess how many surveys were compiled? 236. Yes, 236 totally non-biased responses were used to identify that bigotry in Spokane housing is paramount. There's no individuality. It's all intersectional group identity. But don't worry, Spokane, your bigotry can be solved by restricting the ability to raise rents, increase taxes for rental assistance, prevent evictions for anything not on the small list of just causes, disproportionately restrict white people from participating in shaping housing policies, increasing the minimum wage, allowing multifamily housing in all neighborhoods, increase taxes to pay for first-time home buyers down payments, charging landlords for the attorney fees used to sue them, and of course, continue to fund our five-year plan to end homelessness that somehow never seems to get to year five.
Thank you. Any council commentary? Hearing none? Prepare to vote. Thank you.
Resolution 2024-81, setting forth the city council's approval and endorsement of funding for contracts for CHHS arising from the Home Investment Partnership Program allocation and from the 1590 sales and uses tax revenue allocation and authorizing the execution of the applicable and appropriate contracts once formalized without further city council action. $9,67,404.
That's one public comment. John Alder?
John, once again, if you're online, you can hit star three and we'll call on you.
Seeing none? Any council commentary? Councilmember Kat Carn.
Yeah, I'll be brief again. I was pretty clear, I think, back in May that if we didn't follow the code, I was not going to support this. I do not believe the RFP actually followed the code. There are priorities in our SMC. Whether I agree with them or not isn't the point, but they are in our SMC and they were not in that RFP. They were not scored as part of the scoring sheet. And so, I just, I simply cannot support this for that reason alone. But alternatively, I would just say there are a few projects in here where I just, I wonder if we are getting the best bang for the buck. I had considered offering an amendment last week, but I wasn't able to get some of the detailed information that I needed in time to get that drafted. In fairness, I asked for it late, but without realizing first that I was going to need some additional information to get that drafted up. So, I just, I will not be supporting this. I really do hope, though, that we have a better collaborative process the next time this goes out. I think that there are some priorities and things that are in the code that should be included. Maybe we need to update the code in the meantime if there are changes we want to see. But the code's the code and I just cannot support something that blatantly ignores the code.
You have a council commentary? Hearing none? Prepare to vote. Thank you.
Ordinance C 36120 is deferred to September 23. First reading ordinances. Ordinance C 36567, renaming the Office of Police Ombudsman and the Office of Police Ombudsman Commission and amending Sections 4.32.010 through 4.32.040, Sections 4.32.060 through 4.32.110, Section 4.32.130, and Sections 4.32.150 through 4.32.160 of the Spokane Municipal Code. Further action is deferred on the first reading ordinances.
We have two public comments. Will Hughlings and then Dennis Flynn.
Good evening. My name is Will Hughlings and I live downtown. So, let's see. I want to express my strong opposition to Ordinance C 36567, which seeks to amend the title of Office of Police Ombudsman to Office of the Police Ombuds? I can barely even say it. But the term ombudsman has served our city of Spokane and countless other communities across the United States for decades. It is a title that has always been understood to be gender neutral and there's no compelling reason to change it now. This push to replace ombudsman with ombuds is clearly part of a broader effort to cater to a woke agenda, which seeks to make changes to the sake of inclusivity, even when these changes are not, are unnecessary. Frankly, I see this change as a waste of time and resources. The term ombudsman has never been an issue in altering it to ombuds doesn't solve any real problems. It's a superficial change designed to appease those who prioritize political correctness over common sense. I don't believe this city should be indulging in these kinds of symbolic gestures that ultimately do nothing to improve the lives of our residents. Let's be clear, this move is about making a small group of people feel good about themselves by imposing their views on the rest of us. It's part of a trend where everything that offends a certain group gets erased or renamed. This isn't progress, it's pandering. If the Democrats had their way, they would rename everything in our city that they find remotely offensive, chipping away at our traditions and common sense. As a community, we need to stand firm against this. This title, ombudsman, has served us well and there's no good reason to change it now. I also want to address any Republican who may be tempted to support this ordinance. You should be ashamed of yourselves. By supporting this, you are betraying your constituents, but also allowing the left to chip away at the values we hold dear. We need to draw the line and say, "No more." Thank you.
Thank you, Will.
Council President Dennis Flynn, living near St. Charles. Regarding renaming ombudsman to the real word ombudsman to the fake word ombuds seems stupid. Everyone knows an ombudsman, a policeman, a fireman, and a repairman may be a woman or a man. This is an example of forcing a divisive problem where there wasn't one to begin with. And by the way, ombuds, if you can find it in the dictionaries, which it isn't in all of them, is plural of the word ombud. So, if you're going to change it, you should change it to the singular.
Thank you. That concludes our legislative agenda. We'll now go into open forum. You are limited to two minutes. Please direct all your comments to me and please be respectful. And we're going to start with Suzanne Stewart and then Chest Johnson and then Larry Andrews.
And John Alder, you're on the list. And if you want to testify online, you can hit star three and we'll call on you.
First, let me apologize. This is the first time I've ever been to one of these meetings or addressed anything like this, so I don't know the statutes and whatnot. But my point is this, if a two-year-old found a gun in a car and they killed, let's say, their brother, would we put that two-year-old in jail? Would we say it was premeditated? Would we say, "Oh, it was manslaughter"? No, because the two-year-old didn't know what it was doing. I'm here because scraps is killing dogs that don't know what they were doing. Unfortunately, my two dogs were in altercation. They're big dogs that caused the death of a very 15-pound dog. At that time, I could have walked away because I didn't know who this dog was. Well, I wasn't there, my husband was, and this person didn't know who we were. But being the good citizen that I used to be, I put an ad in nextdoor.com, said what happened and said, "Please contact me." They did the next day. I paid for, and unfortunately, the dog did not survive only because my dog is, he's half pit bull and he's half mastiff. He has a very large head and a big mouth. And unfortunately, his big mouth punctured vital organs of this dog. The dog did live until it got to the vet. They were able to be with that dog while the vet was put down. I paid the vet bills. I paid for a private cremation. I prayed for an urn and we also purchased a new dog for these people. Because of the city that I live in, scraps demands that my dogs be on a leash and a muzzle, and I'm sorry, I had eye surgery, at all times, except when they're in the house. So, when they're in their backyard, they have to have a muzzle and a leash. Unfortunately for me, I was in my backyard, my dog was on a leash, I did not have the muzzle on him. I have another issue with, that I have to get a court order for, a restraining order. Anyway, a neighbor came in our yard, took the picture, and scraps showed up and took my dog.
Thank you, Suzanne. Your time is up.
Just maybe a quick point of order.
Yes.
To, since this is your first time coming down here, if you want to talk more, we'll be around after, since we couldn't get to all your testimony and happy to follow up. So, yep.
Good evening. So, I'm here in regards to this new police chief that you all voted in. I personally would like the votes to be reversed and he be properly vetted. I looked into his past with the Tucson Police Department. There was lawsuits filed by the ACLU of his police department that he was once the assistant police chief of using a system called a Stingray, which hacks into people's cell phones. You can look this up on the ACLU website. It conducts illegal searches and downloads phone call information, text messages of people's cell phones. They were doing this without warrants. ACLU submitted public records requests. Sergeant, we use Sergeant Hill, refused these requests, even reaching out to the company for legal advice that developed the product on how to avoid releasing these public records. Now, Lisa Brown, when she swarmed in today, said he was going to have integrity and he was going to be transparent. Refusing public records requests by an Arizona state law, reaching out to a company that developed a spying device to hack into people's cell phones is not integrity and it is certainly not transparent. This is not somebody that should be running our already troubled police department, allowing his former police department to conduct warrantless searches of people's cell phones and then refuse a public records request of a system paid for with public dollars. This was him. He is named in the ACLU lawsuit. I submitted it through the email, through your all's document online, so you all should have it. I also emailed it to Ms. Wilkerson last week. This is something that should be looked at. We should not have a civil rights violator who's violating Fourth Amendment rights and then refusing to release public records of a publicly-paid system that was committing crimes against the people to cover up what his former police department was doing. This guy needs to be properly vetted. You all should look into this past. It's with the ACLU. It's not some conspiracy theory and it was reported through numerous news agencies in Tucson, Arizona.
Thank you, Chest. Your time is up. Larry, welcome.
My name's Larry Andrews and I live here in Spokane and I also have a business and I want to thank you for allowing me to speak, Betsy. I want to speak about what's happened in the last month or so here. Last time I came down here, I was in a rush to get here. And so, I knew we had a new bridge, but yet, when I got down here, I found out the bridge was a one-way bridge out of, out of Spokane, okay, basically? I mean, we paid $21 million for that bridge. That bridge was a two-way bridge and now I can't get to City Hall through that bridge, which I could before. We got these nice, beautiful boxes. I don't know, maybe that cost a million dollars. I think you need to reevaluate what you guys are doing down here. I mean, you're spending money and you're thinking, you're not even thinking about transportation anymore. I mean, there's only one way to get to City Hall now and that's Spokane Falls Boulevard. That's it. I didn't like it. So, then my dad needed me to haul a bunch of garbage to the dump, right? And he lives in the Shadle area and I've always went around the Indian Canyon West Road, right? Well, I get there and the thing's barricaded off. I can't hardly get through. I finally got through and then, then the road's in such disarray that I should have just went down the other way, turned around. And, but then we had the fire. What if a fire truck needed to go through there? He could never have got through there. No way. I mean, I just continually see mistake after mistake happening in this city. I mean, you all voted for raises and, and we're $50 million in debt. What do you think? I mean, unbelievable. I'm out of time. Thanks anyway.
Good to see you. Is John Alder?
No, John's not.
John's not online today. Terry Hill?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Will Hughlings and I live downtown. As someone who lives downtown, just blocks from Spokane City Hall, I am deeply unhappy with the direction our city is headed under Mayor Lisa Brown's leadership. In the current state of the Spokane Police Department, what was once the heartbeat of downtown Spokane where I live in is now one of the historic, most historic buildings downtown now has become a place of crime, chaos, and despair in 2024. Outside my building has turned into a literal, SH, it's a cuss word, shithole. It's impossible to walk around the block without coming into contact with homeless individuals, people intoxicated on hard drugs like fentanyl and meth. Can you imagine having to be around people like that all day when you want to walk outside? That's what I deal with. And I complain about it all the time. Or those who are mentally unstable. These people seem to have no regard for anything and the situation is deteriorating rapidly. I'm honestly embarrassed for anyone visiting Spokane. This is not the city we know and love. My safety and the safety of others downtown is of utmost importance. We need to see real action from the Spokane Police Department, particularly at the downtown precinct, which should be better manned 24/7. Where are the foot patrols? The only time I see police downtown is when they're driving by in their fancy police vehicles.
Thank you, Will. Your time is up.
My name is Anton. I'm a Spokane resident, District One. Okay. How unfortunate what the founding fathers have drafted for the sake of the people and the country. The Constitution of the United States, which is still in its prime, only has been in existence for the last 248 years, not even 300 years. How unfortunate, how reckless and selfish some of us have become that leads up to where we are today. No doubt, we all have a part in destroying the well-being of the sanctuary, the founding fathers, with the help of the five civilized tribes established for us. The people, sadly to our ignorance, the wicked among us is attempting to replace the Constitution with an Old English law called discovery of doctrine, a 14th century principle kings used to govern and the peasants and slaves. Fortunately for the people and unfortunate for the selfish, for the selfish- people and unfortunate for the selfish, their selfish dreams are shattered, are falling apart, maybe God. The great spirit has spoken. After all, there is such being that truly does exist. I am warning you. Negative ways is moving into the sunset. Negative ways are no longer potent like it once was. Do what is right. Have the wisdom to know and understand the difference between positive ways and negative ways. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew? Pass? Thank you very much. That concludes our public comment for this evening. There will be no council next Monday as that is Labor Day. Our next meeting will be September the 9th. We look forward to seeing you then. I will entertain a motion for dismissal.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes? Attention, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Have a great Labor Day weekend.